No, Leon is at.
Diane is here to take our part to take notes for us.
We have four items on our agenda for tonight. The first item on the Lori Airport public and future plan. And you worked with Brian, put the agenda together.
Diane did. My assistant.
Want to kick that one off?
Go ahead and tell us what's up, what's new since the last time we spoke.
Well, we have two members of the airport commission. We have Luke and Lisa on our airport commission. My understanding that they just recently set up a public hearing for the F A funding and what was included in that is I think without.
Chairman, just if I can give a little context. Yeah, so Brian, get a city administrator, so just to give you a little update on the process. So each year, the city has to go in front of the Bureau of Garden Act for a petition for funding for any improvements in the major platform. The no sub public hearing that we have in front of the table is what is going to be the petition for 2023. Just to be very clear, based on our last conversation in July, the petition that's in front of you, we are not asking for any money for any expansion. The money that we're asking for is for refurbishment of the existing runway, its existing configuration. So that was something we talked about July, I just wanted to kind of reiterate that that's not intention of the city council to expand runway at this point, it's just for funds for probably a 2027, 2028 would likely be when that would be funded by the D O A would be for maintenance of the runway and its existence. And then there are a couple of other additional items that we have in the queue each year. Been for long knowing wildlife assessment money. Keeping in there, relying on it for purchase of an unleaded fuel tank, that becomes a possibility in the future. Paying marketings, journey age equipment, those types of things. I just wanted to give you a copy of the notice with public hearing that will be from our commission on January 10. Morton Malcolm should attend, will provide a semi of your comments or testimony that you want for that meeting. But just wanted to, just let everyone know what our intentions were and make it a bit clearer that it is for repavement of the runway and its existence.
It might be published 2029, 21.
Yeah, so it, that's when it's going to get published.
So it meets with 22.
Well, it'll be submitted to them prior to that and get published on the 29th.
Right, and then year, the year of. You think you did this correctly.
Oh, that is important. So remember what, you know, Brian said. We are keeping the runway as it is and it will be, the taxiway and the runways stay the same, there's no change. And the taxiway, I think you probably won't know this and look that that comes past 27 and then the runway 28. There's no tension. So just the elevation. So that's, that's very important and that should make you, you should, I thought you were guys jumping up and down. So I mean, you wanted that, didn't you?
Yeah, kind of emotionless group.
Okay, okay.
I still don't regret resent the people.
It isn't so much.
Across the residents that live in the area.
What's this purpose terminal building, says building here? Yes, that's that might, again, that's a thing that we've had on this or while so that the city owned the land or need to rebuild it. We don't own the building itself, it's owned by the Middleton Area Development Corporation. It's a discussion topic that the city council hasn't even really gotten into the weeds on yet, but we have that on there. At least it would be something that comes to fruition in the future, we have to have it on the list.
It's been an interest of the chair of the airport commission for a couple of years now, for the airport commission and city to properly have control of that building rather than currently these spaces where that relationship is for that terminal building.
And the airport commission had a vote taken, the thought of all companies, all officials.
It's, it's come up as part of an ongoing conversation, but certainly no formal vote has been, has taken, trying to be like, I know that the it's had amongst the Middleton Area Development Corporation, it has come up. I don't know if they've taken a formal vote, yea or nay, but no, the airport commission itself has not taken a stance for a or con.
So the land lease is up to 2020. So the city does not really speak on a, well, I just wanted to say only that.
Please, it's July, I just wanted to find your story, the no expansion message that you're hearing at the September 1st airport mission meeting. The chair, we were talking about the different capital projects that we could undertake that would go into this decision. And the chair said, if you extend it, you would want to do it during the reconstruction, right? So, but then the D O A representative on the call came back and said, actually, you don't want to do those stuff. He emphasized, you do not want to reconstruct, extend at the same time, reconstruct first. And it has to do with, they have to be separate projects in order to generate, you have to fund it. So that was news to everybody on the call except their D O A representatives. I want to relearn that, but I heard the logic of doing both at the same time.
But is your intention to extend it?
No, 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 I'm just saying, if you had heard that expansion would take place at the same time that the runway is rehabilitated, maybe I misspoke and said the two together, but no, the, the point is the rehab or at the time we're talking about reconstruction, but now we're talking about rehabilitation of the runway, the next way. That has to be a separate project from any kind of.
There's no expansion planned for the future.
No, right now in 27 taxiway and 28, you know, as it is.
Usually the D O P or like any of these projects, you know, state funded projects, they don't convolute the two ever, they'll do one and then they'll come back two or three years later and then they'll do it right. And it's crazy, but it all has to do with the federal funding and how it's spent. Prime cases, the stoplights in Ashland, they only wanted two turn lanes, right, they made it to the left. They wouldn't do it and it had to wait five years and then they could get the money to put the two turn lanes.
I just ask, is there expansion?
I had, I had just seen in the Middleton fan trivia, and you were looking to maybe buy a fuel truck so that you have availability of unleaded fuel for airplanes, is that something you are?
Yeah.
I'm only here and I read the paper.
Yeah, so the city council has made the decision to purchase a used fuel truck out of Highland. It's a fuel truck that is used out of gas before. We're getting quotes on a couple of repairs need to happen to make the truck function better and once that's done, hopefully after the holidays, we'll get it in-house here at the airport. The goal would be to use that truck to offer Swift 94 field, which is 94 octane unleaded, until such time that 100 unleaded fuel becomes commercially available. It's not in market right now and so we want to be able to offer something that six, six percent planes can use until such time that they universal. So hope to have that online as soon as possible in January once the truck fixed. In-house, we've got the contract swift or the distribution agreement swift where you go, so just keep the truck.
On top of that is all the plane, the security facility and they need certain certification. That process is already in the end of the 10th. So as soon as the gas becomes available, there will be the need to grow. So I, we don't, what I'm, we are doing as fast as we can, so because unleaded gasoline, it did actually to have and the city wants to have a second that.
With your concerns, so we want to, or some one way we can do it?
Right, well, and again, you know, it doesn't directly affect the board members that are sitting here that be here from our.
Also, you're not leaving, your house is not under the.
Actually, quite a few, actually, there's most, I bet you a lot, quite a few of the airplanes that fly out of Lori do fly over my home because of where I'm at, like when they fly up to Sauk or Lake Wisconsin, I'm, I'm in that flight corridor. So like every time Med Flight flies by, it flies almost correctly over my head.
But let it rip away from me, right? In, in any case, you know, the right thing to do and the complacency, the commitment. And it's not only the towns that are impacted, city has, these are, there's in, you know, Britain Hills, Ripton Hills and all that whole area. District 5 and District 6, they are, there are more militant citizens, you know, living close to airport and under under the flight path than probably the town of, we want to keep you happy, you know.
Right, I think, I think.
And who did I think?
You know, it's, it's first steps and I think people will be happy.
I just want to be kind of, that we may lose our forum of five pointers. We want to keep this on contact, so is there anything you want to, anything else you want to add on this? But that's what question two is right now. Okay, so no action, we're just going to move on to number two, eminent domain access, access jurisdictional boundaries.
Yeah, about as much as you need.
Right. We had talked about this the last time, and well, in our agreement and our set on for the town on that agreement and then when we renewed it, there's some basic language in there, you know, but it's not real firm that said, you know, about eminent domain. And I know that, that we have a, you know, a number of landowners that live around the airport are very concerned about eminent domain. And then, and again, that has to do with, you know, you have some longer age plans for possibly putting detention bonds, you know, to the north of the city and stuff. And, you know, the farmer, the farmers that live around there, you know, for them, that's probably their highest value land because it's, it's their feed that they take right off, go right to the farm. Because you don't have to haul it, you know, miles, miles down the road, that there's all costs and stuff. So that's why when, the last time we talked, just said that if we're going to take a look at renewing or, or making changes to our agreement between the two, we would like to see that shore up a little more because we just don't, as, as a board, we just feel that there's really no necessary, it's not necessary. I mean, is there, is there a real reason why? I mean, the whole reason the town of Springfield, you know, sat down with your predecessors was that we want to have these issues and we want to eliminate these issues. Like I said, I've been on the town board for 20 years. Before I was on the town board, the city of Middleton and the town of Springfield weren't for fighting over land annexation and stuff. And that's why we decided as, as a group, it would be better to sit down with your neighbor and work. That's all we've ever asked. And so this is something that has, like I said, a number of the farmers around, you know, in, in my town are, are very concerned about what, what happened for them. And so if that's, you know, off the table or we write it into the agreement, you know, I think it might actually, if the day company doing purchase property, it might be to your advantage because it takes the fear, the fear away from them. I know that they, I talked to one of the landowners here about a year ago about and he said, well, if they want to pay what the county paid by the acre farm, then I think I consider selling it. I don't know if you guys, like that might be tough. But then, you know, again, it's, it's nothing we're going to do today, but I, I, I really would like to think about that because I see no reason why we should do it. You've already, you're taking 148 acres all of our town right now that, and we agreed to it, we didn't challenge, believe it or not. You know, you probably could have, but again, we, we would rather work with you. But on anything, there's, in any relationship, I think most of us, there's given tape every relation. You don't always get everything you want every time. But a lot of times you can come to the path. That's unfortunately in today's political climate, there doesn't seem to be any pathogen. And that, and that's really a tragic thing because we're all Americans.
So is there an area that you need to, to keep a development filming or a park filming?
Would, would there be something? And that doesn't, and that we can, we can own that, we could evidence that it's not a park, don't have annexed with really, so sort of that.
Right.
And that I think is a way to. For hopefully guaranteed. Mentioned by the airport and you just go over that this connect, anything that can change quickly and then one another agenda, I think we have on the floor. So whether you would.
Well, we've offered to do that and like.
And we'll get to that too, you know.
Right, we can talk about that and if you want to put them together, it doesn't make any difference to us. So, yeah, I just, I, I think you should really seriously consider that because, I mean, for those landowners that are around the city, you know, if, if you see municipalities using it, I've seen it in my, in my career. For 40 years I've worked in construction, developed all over, I developed parts of the city, you know, of Middleton, you know. And, you know, when you see that happening, that it, it's, it doesn't really do anybody in, in the long term, I think it hurts municipalities to use it. Then it just, it drives up the price of everything.
My dad, we didn't have a present gift.
I know that, father, I didn't say you did.
No, no, but we, we haven't looked at it and we have no plans. And just like with Hyatt, you know, we talked to them and, you know, we agreed on a plan. We, I don't, we have any plans and you, you mentioned that farm situation. We communicated with the owners and they did not want to sell it or have any, they didn't want from there and we didn't pursue it. So, so, so we are really, we are on the same side. So, you know, let's be working with the people rather than trying to do the end. So.
That's why we're sitting here today.
And, and I agree.
Can you tell me, you said that we're taking up 140 acres. What is the universe of your acres about that the town of Springfield, I'm not sure how large.
We are.
Yeah.
Seven miles by seven miles.
So it's huge, okay.
Well, yeah.
So the.
Then you have to take out the, the areas that are, you know, creeks and water like Wysie Marsh. You'd be surprised that the, the good acreage comes down fast.
And I want to.
No, I'm just.
The other thing you were, you were saying something for the mayor. He said that we hadn't taken that domain that maybe others have.
I have seen in my career as I.
Not in Springfield.
Not in Springfield, no, in, in my professional career, I, I know of these other municipalities, you know, Madison, Sunbury, whatever, they use that, that, and, you know, in the long run, it gives you, it helps you in the near, the near or the third to long term. Because then, you know, let's just, let's just be honest, the city is here, okay? And so you use eminent domain, you take this land, well, the guy that's right next to it, he's going, he's going to get ready and he's going to do something, you know, that for every action, there's an opposite people reaction. I didn't write it, but it's true.
Why, we are not in politics, you know.
You, you're the, this is a college graduate.
This is awesome.
I learned in the school.
We are good neighbors, we, we good friends and I don't think we have any plans to, you know.
No, I would just, like I said, it's nothing we have to do today, but next time we, we renew our, or we make some changes in our boundary agreement, I think we would like to.
Well, Brian, we can start with the harvest, the current agreement of both March 29 and we have to start the discussion in March of 2024. So not too far.
Not too far away, right.
We're, we're going to be a new council and, sure, we can let it, let us get our beat under us then.
No, but if we, we all agree on it, chances, we come and, I'll say as well as the next, we all come and go with election. Brian here, so if he knows that, if he knows it, then he'll remember and, you know, they'll, they'll have this and they'll know that. The next time we open the board, they made some changes that some. And there's no reason why we may want, you know, if, if you or us all agree, you can, we can open and vote for that.
No, I'm just saying, we have such, so we said to try to reach the.
Right, but when we get to this next item, we start talking, you know, that might be again, a reason why. We're okay with it.
It's your town.
We understand that you need to block the language.
No, yeah, you're a town, we appreciate you definitely.
Any other thing you want to talk about? Okay, so we're getting about the traffic control, future, we did talk about the traffic laws meeting and how we should partner together to make make our case a little stronger.
Well, I think there's, we're both getting that's, I can't think of the name, but we're getting cross traffic or, you know, cut through traffic is probably is good at the, so it hurts us, it hurts you. And we'd like to see if we could find a way to do it. So, you know, at one time we were thinking, you know, what if Bell Fontaine would have been built a four lane all the way through that that would have helped eliminate a lot of that, but I don't know if that's ever going to come to fruition or not anymore. So, you know, most of the traffic that we're seeing, like in Greenbrier and Holzer and all this, that is not on target. You know, there's people cutting through and if they're cutting through on us, they don't, they don't live in my town, not living in here down there. So I, I mean, there's something we can do on, I have talked, so I know it's public. I talked with the Wisconsin Town Association, they actually have it on their agenda to try and look to get litigation or language through the state to allow the towns to be able to set speed limits. But that's one of the things we're trying to curtail on, on our ability to set speed limits. We can, if I want a lower at below 45, I have to do a speed limits study. And if the people drive too fast, they won't allow us to do it. So therefore Greenbriers perhaps keep the studies light, but the average speed in the morning, the fair traffic is 60 pounds an hour. And so they won't allow, you know, as far as, but they're supposed to be driving 45, like, pretty much, they won't allow it. But one of the things we can do in the meantime is if we agree for certain town, certain roads that we share jointly, I am told that we can come to an agreement, we can post it down on the dirt.
Is Greenbrier one of those shared jobs?
Yes.
And that's a pretty residential area.
Yes.
There's a lot of.
Well, Greenbrier.
It leads towards the eastern end.
Right, well, but it does, where you first come in, you're going to have land up against it and it kind of bends around and it's going to be in the town. But on the other end again, you know, where you're annexing acre property, you're going to be there. So that's just one, Greenbriers one, and that cut through traffic started when the highway fall was mentioned.
Yeah, that's surprising too, because visibility on that 1023. So the fact that people are going six, a lot.
Well, that's what our, our studies are showing that.
When was the last time you did?
It's probably been five or six. But it doesn't, it doesn't change in the same, we went, you know, down on peasant branch and stuff, we went to additional stop signs and stuff. That's still, you know, it's still a problem. So I, you know, I had the brainstorm about shutting the intersection off that going, you know, left turn or, you know, right turn in, right turn out of, but, you know, the farmers that are on that, we're probably not be real happy with that. But you can, and again, we'd have to find out legal ease, but supposedly you are allowed to do it certain things. Just like Madison, they have roads all over that have times that you cannot, you can't turn them up. And so, you know, we did that in the mornings, that we keep the cars on K, so they put on Highway 12.
And you talked about K and let's get K fully in hybrid. Well, I mean, that is.
Well, the only way, and again, it's because we, it's our town. I was actually, it's been quite a while. It's probably been six, eight years ago, the D O T, they did a study and they asked the town, the town chair at that time and myself, we both attended it. We looked at North and North Parkway corridors and we looked at like intersections and, you know, and, and or what. And I can tell you that the plan that was originally approved for the North Parkway never going to get built because it's near an ephemeral, feminine?
Ephemeral.
Ephemeral wetland and they just, they said no way.
So that's why Highway K.
Highway K to take its existing quarter and expand, probably is probably still our best route. I know at the time when Tough Wells was admitted, we took a look at where it's would be coming off of Highway M and turning. If we moved it south of K, like right next to where the wetland area, it's all the way over as far as we could. Then they could size it forwards to slow the water down, help the flooding and stuff. But again, this was all, it's a one time rule already. So, but we haven't, we haven't heard anything, you know, anything official, but I, you know, the county keeps saying that that, you know, they want the state or the D O T to build this and they told us point blank, the D O T told me that there is no way they want to build, that that would have to be county, city, whatever property. And that, you know, you could get some federal funding, but it's, it would not be a priority of the D O T. People come and go in the D O T too.
Well, I'm not content with your advice and the directors are telling now, but I guess from their reply, from their time.
Oh, the M P O, yeah, well, they, they just helped to direct the funding, they went really, that's just part of the planning process.
Yeah, what's, what's in your plans for developing between Permanter and where Bell Fontaine is now? Is that in the near future plan that that's being laid out to do?
That's some, that's some of the land.
Yeah, that's benefits, that's something they want.
And, and Bell Fontaine, both are, will go through the permit or that's going to be doing for, for lenders. And there'll be that with control measures or to avoid. One of the things we've been talking about lately is whether to have access from, but right now the plan for the the red tail river, the eight bond development, the high road and touch brain growth has an outlet on Southern Brain Road north of where the main parking lot is, well, the original parking lot is for Southern Brain Road. And there's a lot of concern, my district, people on old creek road and also in health and health for the brain growth about how bad it's going to be, the people coming from, that's already are going to pull this road, let's front it in there. That's one of the things to them. Trying to get information from those, um, that, you know, it's just, um, there's, there's been any ones.
And I realize that, that you want to keep it so that it's not used as a cut through mode and you don't want it in a four lane mode. But I think what's, what you really need to do is get yourself at about 30,000 feet, look down over your, that side of town. How will you handle the traffic as developments continue, acre property, I don't know what the name of, of what that property is going to be. Where are those cars expecting, if they want to go to Highway 12? Where are those cars expecting? If they want to go to Highway twelve, probably get there. But they could all be forced onto Greenbrier Road, which we all know doesn't work. So you're, you're just forcing more traffic onto a road that's substandard now versus. The potential of something that would have lined up. I'm assuming Bellefontaine would have lined up with Schneider Road. Does that work from down in the perimeter somewhere in that area?
No, I think.
I thought it was pretty close.
It's close, but I think it's not direct.
But, but it would have been in the general, but see now you could just either go in Milton or you can get on to Beltline right there. And that's why. Every town and we've had this discussion of the problem middle, uh, road by us. That I disagree with on how they did it and you gotta make sure that the cities. Don't totally look at them as developments for homes as trying to somehow channel the traffic to your city officially. Because ultimately, everybody that lives in those areas want to get from point A to Beltline as quickly as possible. You're going to do that however they can do it. So make sure that you don't look at. Acre development that's too nearsighted. And make it so that you can get the most amount of bang for your buck in that area versus about having a road that can handle some. Cut through traffic, handle the flow of traffic within your road. Because the channel at all to Greenbrier Road. Is not a, a good road to try to channel.
And be honest, what strikes, strikes me odd is that, you know, when you originally conceived Bellefontaine with a four lane. So most people that walk home knew they were building by four lane, even though, you know, they, it, it wasn't at that time. And again, I've seen this in other municipalities, you know. They build it in sections and then when, nobody wants that last section to tie in them. And remember, Pittsburgh was tied in the place of neighbor for. We don't want to run a dead end road down. Why, why would you make this a through road? Well. Man, it's through, through road because that's where schools are. So then all the traffic go down, go down the road and take the, you know, the key road, take the left and go right up. That's a whole reason. So I would, I would just caution that, you know, especially now, if you're putting in another development that aren't the same. You know, we would like to see that Bellefontaine extended to Permanter. Those cars then, if they do want to go, they'll, they'll take Bellefontaine and go and they're your residents. In reality, so, you know, we have enough problems with other people from, you know, other municipalities coming through our town and city. But for yours, we'd like to see, ensure that they have a. To get west.
And you're absolutely right. That's what we're hoping to do. Bellefontaine will come and be permanent.
Right, but you're going to tooling it, which yes or no, um, you know, even a tooling go through there. Will serve traffic way better than Greenbrier Road. What we'd like to see is, to be honest with you, Bellefontaine got taken care of. I, I wouldn't, I would entertain closing Greenbrier Road off to Paulson. Because we won't, we don't have any residents, so. You know, so like right past the port, we could shut that road literally off. We've talked, we've talked to some of the people that live over in that area. And, you know, that they really, they feel threatened for their lives walking across the road.
So if the other thing I would say is, is if you build this. Four, four lane road. It allows you the future that you could grow into. But it would also make it safer when it is a two lane road that you kept the homes back. Because if you, if you drive through Bellefontaine now. The homes are kept back, there's, I think, if I remember, it's been a long time, but there's like a ditch that runs through the handle of the stormwater and stuff. And so it's probably a little bit safer being, it is a wider area.
I think they kept the east one the same, didn't they? And they were trying to put in, um. Paths and stuff, not, um, not that they're moving the homes.
Right, but even if you had four lane, but, you know, in these residential areas, you'll, I'm sure you notice, especially in the winter time. You know, again, you're always going to have cars, you're getting cars. And so, um. Just to make sure that it's widened up and everything for firing the mass, I can tell you the village was key. They had, um, hearing it's some developments down there and that Friday, it was green, they made the streets nice and narrow. And the only problem was is that the fire trucks, if people were parked on the road. Fire and mess, but I was. And so that's, that's the other thing I would caution about is because, again, you know, as you grow. You will be growing something, you know, eventually, you need to be able to have that. That other route. If you had, because if you had a major action on Highway four. But, and you had a fire going on at the same time, you've got, you've got to have a way to get.
All right, and then you have excellent point. So I think, you know, that's, that's a good important, uh, Bellefontaine and, uh. You know, so we did have the MPO data, so, so, so I think we could look at that again. We don't want to use the Greenbrier as, you know, more than what it's now. So people who should be in Bellefontaine, that's, and I think that's a great point.
Well, even. Because part of my concern was several years ago when on Bowles Road, the plan for town Middleton was, was on the. South end of Bowles Road, I live on that road, but, uh. Once it leaves the town, Springfield goes into town Middleton, there was a plan that was put together probably fifteen years ago. Now, when they finally came to build it. The Caribbean homes that were built out there, talked them into, we could get more, more homes in here, they choked it down to. A nice residential road on that end to get the airport. But everyone to my north that wants to get their kid to the schools on Airport Road, which is where they go. Come past my place. And so they're going to race down to that end, then they're going to have to try to get through what they choked down to residential road. If they would have left it like they had it, it would have been still just a two lane road, but it would have been just a straight shot and got it right to. And so it would have worked better, they changed it.
They meandered it in order to get more lots and, you know, for greater profit, which is. Which is wonderful if you want, you know, more homes and whatnot, but, yeah, the, it, it, it kind of took that. Commuter traffic away. And again, we have, you know, uh, Riddle Ridge right there and, you know, most people, they need.
I think the excellent point. So are there some other intersections or any other things?
I was wondering, so, you know, this should be on, like, that, like, we're all, we're all the time. Would it be helpful if a couple from Springfield, from the city, they pour a little work through and you keep that dialogue, we'll talk about what's. You know, what's happening?
Well, at least. If you're going to be putting, let's say, you're going to put, you know, your Bellefontaine. When you, you know, when you start deciding, you know, you're going to build it and whatnot, if you want to reach out to us. Myself or someone from, from the board would, would love to come and at least be there to give input. I mean, we're not going to hold on.
But I'm, I'm wondering also what like when, um. You know, who's having us together as we need to petition, you know, county or whatever.
For your speed limits and stuff.
Yeah, and speed limits, and we have to have this. And I would think like from, like Randall's district, is he, um, up by Division three in that area and that's devoted to the area and. District seven, and I don't know.
He lives over.
Would that be helpful for you to, to have a small?
Before we go, I just, I did love to research the issue of what the municipal authority were, uh, setting speed limits is, and Brian, you can hear more about this, so please correct me if I'm wrong. But municipalities do have the ability to reduce, uh, state truck highways, county truck highways, rustic roads and town roads. But must each one of that we do that has to have a traffic study? That eighty-five percent of the traffic that currently goes through is going to be within five miles per hour of what the posted speed limits were.
That, that's the rules and that's why we're looking. The rules that they use for setting them, the campus were created in nineteen sixty-five. So that's why the Wisconsin town is trying to get this, there are new traffic guidelines out there, but. I don't, for whatever reason, Wisconsin stuck in, they have a lot of older.
But that kind of data we can get with our traffic. You guys have, has been put down for speed study?
No, we usually hired being.
But that is, that is part of the reason why Highway twelve wanted to go to sixty-five. Through the town Springfield was to reward the speakers driving in that section of road. And then we met with them at least once or twice.
We fought it.
Had a rule then. And, or so they did build it.
No, but there's still long-term plans to. Turn that into a freeway. There are, you know, there are long-term plans, but it isn't.
But they wanted to take that road now and.
Emily, I would just start talking.
Nice. And what I was going to say is, I live on Allen, so I get the traffic one key straight in the modest. Uh, they're always ten miles over, it's just what it is. We asked the county to come there. To drop the mileage, so they'd only go ten miles over, say twenty-five, just two fifty-five. That was my initial goal. Yeah, that didn't happen. They all, they were like, why would they do such a thing? So the, the thing I'm saying is, I would be happy to support you to reduce it, but I can't even, that, that Allen is literally my district. So I don't share it anymore. We can't reduce that. So if, if there's something I can do, I'm happy to do it.
Well, that's why if, if, I mean, and again, and just, they call it, in politics, they call it law book. So. If you go, you can ask for something, they say no. If I go, they say no. Sometimes when you go together, they think.
That's where performance group and you come up with them. To, we know where, when you just petition the right people and when it's. Between us, Randall, do you feel like that would be a, something you can?
Yeah, I mean, well, you know. Well, I mean, that's.
I didn't have the refresh of myself.
Well, we could at least meet on a couple of times and talk about, look at the possibilities. Because it, 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 it does us know. Neither one of us.
Somebody from Dave Halli and what you're talking about, who knows?
Do you have a place? I have a place first I use and I talk to.
At the county?
Yeah, I work with the county supervisor.
The one I use to you.
So maybe look at that, and I, I would think like, um, Mr. Seven also shares that boundary, like, kind of like.
Yeah, yeah. Well, there, those, you can be honest, I'm not trying to dig deep, they have, they have come before the board numerous times. And, you know, they want us to put stop signs. Yeah. Up there and we're, and I won't do it because I know what's going to happen. You know, they're going to, person's going to come to the T intersection. They're going to look and they're going to see a car coming, they're going to think, ah, they're going to stop at the stop sign. Uh-uh, they're going to pull out and get evil. And that's what kills most people. And that's why, that's why roundabouts are so popular because even if you do tag someone. Usually wouldn't watch play them. So, but I don't think we're going to put a roundabout. But, you know, with a steep slope coming up and stuff, they've even asked us to put rumble strips. To help slow it down and I'm like, no, because I know what will happen is, you know, it sounds good, but after two or three days, it'll sound like rumble strip, they won't like that. And speed bumps, I mean, they're adamant that they feel threatened of the speed of the traffic. And it's, it's the commuter traffic in the morning.
Her name is Pamela Dumsky.
Well, I know Pam Dumsky very well.
Okay.
Well, do you guys, Brian, if you just take sure it's. People bar here, the time that. Before people go together and.
We'd have to take a look at her counter again, but, you know, we have the holidays coming. This is nothing you have to, we'll get down overnight, but I.
Keep the guy, we can't just get together. We're, we're not going to be able to get on both very, anyway. Okay, I think we should, I'm going to jump to the next.
That's.
The next is the star water management. You think it would be a big issue?
Well, it's not an issue for me, it's an issue for you. Because I remember, you know, in your last flooding, you had quite a bit of significant damage and businesses lost. You've been in a drought the last couple of years, but that, you know, depending if you take a look at the, the rest of the country, that some of them are. Weather patterns are changing, but it's man-made or it's just. You know, the things change. My grandfather. Always said that weather cycles in thirty year segments and I kind of, as I get older, I realize all. Because they lived on a farm, did not plan, understood the cycle, the natural cycle. And right now, we've been, so.
So what percentage comes from the town of Springfield of your flooding? I, you, we talked about it several years ago, but there, I forget what's the conclusion versus others. Does all the water come from us or?
Maybe about, uh, in the northern port, it's about sixty-five percent or maybe more. So, and, uh, so we'll have to see the difference between north port and south port. I think big part of the water is coming from.
To come into the north.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So there's only a little bit coming from, uh, from the town of, of Little.
I did talk to the, a couple of the county representatives, you know, I don't know if you noticed, but they're working on. The south end of the. Trying to alleviate, you know, doing dredging and stuff so that. Can get away. Because, like, last winter, actually. One of the, my pond, my, my, I was the first settling pond. Like, you know, the water, but there's another one, quarter mile away from my home, and it was bone dry. We put a, dug it out and took the dirt out. But day one, he was concerned because their plans are to start on, on the south. You know. Unfortunately, people in charge of that have their own. They see things of, in one way in the world, let's say, it's a, a something different. But, you know, for me, it would have way more sense if you wanted to increase. Or nitrogen in the water system. Just a hundred years. Sediments and everything, but not at all. And then you'd have more water storage too, but their, their goal, I'm being told, is that, you know, they're down, they're down right now in the park and stop dredging out the, the channels and stuff. So then when the water does come, they get away. But, um.
Yeah, they did Menona, uh, first and point two. Menona at that time, um, I think they've done with that south chain.
They're down, they're, they're down by.
All and they completely changed it about twenty-five minutes.
Yeah, they did some over here on, on the six, six mile grid. Door area.
I think this is a really, really powerful, pretty, and beautiful. Pretty because, uh, for the platforms and sediment and public, so. We did do that three form study and from three form study, we came to a three, before it was called day one. So that was our best option at the time. We looked at it and, uh. Most of the land was, uh, that land is owned by that dairy, very close to that, that was the name is. So funny. Yeah, right, the dairy and, uh, we talked to them a couple of times and, uh, they. Would give that land, which was only about thirty to fifty acres, they would, they would have been still able to plow that land except that, uh. We would have built the, built the, then it would have been like a little farm. So, and, and that farm would have to be contained for four years now, but anyway, that didn't go anywhere. So, so I think Art and Jim and I and, uh, you know, with Brian, we programmed there and there are some sites in the. In the town of Springfield way up north and if we, you know, keep the water where it is, there are two things. Number one is there's importating in the soil and. And the second is keeping the sediment there. Number three is keeping the path post there as well. So it doesn't have to come, um, come to present and come, present inside there. So, so that is something, uh, you know, that both of us, both the town and city have worked together. And we will need some funding. I think funding would have to come from the county or we have to apply for grants. So, but I, I think we got that adapter program, it is working really well in terms of. Eight million passport, this could be added, well, well, it's a separate thing than that one, but. But I think it's a very good proposal. So I think we could really pursue it in some part.
It's a fundamental issue that a couple of people to, to keep the dialogue going and what can be done.
Well, I think the first step almost has to be in, in the county. Engineer to lay that out so that. They, they should be able to figure out the slopes and where they could put some of those.
I always gotta make this.
Is that something that Springfield can ask the county to do or is it more impactful coming to the city?
Yeah, I don't, I know Carpe has the mapping ability, you know, in the county. With flying dean and whatnot. One foot contours of the entire county. I would have to do a little checking on it, like I said, we. If we're gonna start working together, that would be something interesting. I know that we both use MSA as our engineer. And so, you know, it, I would start with MSA and C because they have it. Cause they have the base site under P, but they have access to all that. Everything that Carpe C and MPO and all that. And so that's why for us, if we need. Stormwater areas or slope information and stuff, they, they just access it right now.
So everyone else on, on council is what we did was we drove around. Long Highway K, I think that would be the.
It is the Black Earth Creek.
The county would have done the work probably in six.
Yeah, mid six.
So you, you really don't see it from the road entirely. You have to know that they're there. Is that they built dams across the bottom of a lot of the woods. Uh, valleys that come out into that area, they built dams across back in the sixties. And that catches the water, so you slow it down coming out of the woods, coming off. Meter dumps. And so it slows it all down. That's, none of that's being done on Middleton's side. And so it's all done on basically from my property heading, uh, to the.
Right, they, they did the fire, you know, and they did a little talking to people that were around back then. And their goal back then was to clean up the black. Black Earth, Black Earth Creek because it's, you know, such a, it's a nationally known. And so, but then the daughter, then that was like nothing, so.
So this is the topic which has the most impact.
Yes, so she had talked about this earlier.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, thanks everybody. Merry Christmas and happy holidays.
Thank you.
Yeah, so this is something what we really need to work together and Art and Jim, you have to explore something. You know, Brian and I are there too. We look at the project. I think let's work together as a.
Springfield and come up with some ideas and how, what Milton needs to be doing and how. Since this is important that when. Together again, should have better direction, what we think that they do together.
I'm just gonna put it out politely though, you know, we'll help and work with you with the. We're all working together on all this stuff. But I'm not, I don't have it in my budget to, you know, spend, expend a great amount of money on this, but. What I can do is, you know, I, I know all the engineers over at MSA real well. I would talk to my town engineer and tell them the concept of it, see, because I think they were probably the ones that did your other pond. So they, you know, they, they already have. It, for me, it would make sense to use them because they already have that database and so they know. You know, they know how many mill gallons of water you need to store for a certain amount of time. So when we start booking.
Having that history is gonna be so important.
Well, there's no reason to reinvent.
They, they would have to just look at that aerial to, to see if there's the possibility to maintain or to hold. The layers or slow it down enough to, to see if there would be worth. Uh, rather than going to pot. I think, I think it could be a starting point. Maybe you still gotta have a, some kind of a pond on the other end. Close to, uh, Middleton, but, uh, this would definitely. Cause there's, there's several feeder valleys coming through the town of Springfield near Ashton. Uh, off of, uh, probably Schneider Road. And that's basically where the impact can come down through some main waterways coming away.
So I would say four of you get together and, uh, have a coffee or.
Well, I think we should, we should try and, and do that, but no, there is, there is, uh. There's always grant funding and stuff and then, you know, the county. Has the initiative, you know, with Jerrah Bryan and all these that, you know, to clean up the lakes. And then, you know, Madison Metropolitan Stewart, you know, they're doing projects. In our town and other towns to try and lower the amount of cost for us that's in the water because it's cheaper to do it. Early than to do it at the end of the pipe. And so, um, I think that there's some, you know, you might not be able to get a hundred percent what you want, but I think you get a bunch and. I've learned, you know, I used to build detention ponds and stuff.
Cause need for somebody to do the job.
We'd have to do it, or what I was gonna say is. I would highly recommend that you try and have a, a number of. Catch pockets rather than to do the one, because if the one fails. You have a big problem. So well, one, you know, if you have this one or two of the smaller ones fail. The whole system still works, but if you have one main car and it fails. You lose everything. That's just.
But the other thing was that rain events. You just travel one mile farther north in the Springfield. I think we can find six inches versus eleven. So there's different pockets where you can catch it, but it's not all going to help. Because the event came so close to probably Airport Road.
It went right down, uh. Schneider.
Cause that's where.
It went just basically three hundred feet north. North of Schneider Road was the cutoff line and it hit right here because it washed a cover on Schneider.
So with all that knowledge base, you would talk to MSA and, uh, without spending any money to.
I'll talk to them first and then, you know, if we're gonna do this, then we'll need to sit down and we should come. And what we had talked, just so, because we are as a whole here. So what we talked about is that, you know, if these farmers, if we could work with these farmers to build these detention areas. You know, then they're with, you know, if you build the, if you build your big pond, you'd have to compensate the farmers. So on the flip side, instead of doing that, those, if we do small or these other areas up, you know. Someone needs to maintain, there's gonna be a cost to keep these up, you know. Most of the time, there isn't much to it, but you know, somewhere along the line, they'll usually need someone. So. For instance, last, last year, along Highway K, wasn't it, it ate a lot up to the dam. The dam failed. And so then, um, I think the county used funds to come in and. They repaired the dam and then it was probably never built. Large enough the first time or, you know, heavy duty enough. And so they, they.
But it wasn't a major breach. It was just, it needed, it needed.
It needed a lot. So then if we had these areas, you know, somehow. Someone would have to probably, number one, maintain this and to be honest, for, you know, the farmers to allow the use of their land. They should, there should be some type of a, a stipend or something for them. Otherwise, why do it? Construction, construction.
Yeah, we typically have management plans. If we can identify what areas must.
I would have sworn trying to say was, okay, so my original question was how big is Springfield and I used to drive it because.
One of those cut through.
So, you know. The ponds, where were the ponds though? You said about three of them. You just sort of, well, like.
Well, what, what your target was the ponds.
Yeah, it runs a few ponds. And then we had another conference open that. And they did not think that two other ponds would do anything. So, so they came up with a different plan. There were two ponds, A one and A two. And they will set up a, uh, wealth of the capital and protect them. So, so I think, uh, so then we have traveled around there and, uh. The best solution, Emily, is that, uh, if the water stays where it is rather than trying to contain it over here. So the water will importation of the soil, right? Off what will stay there, night base will stay there, sediment will stay there. So, so that's a much better, deeper and.
Well, I, I appreciate that, but I think what I was more thinking was are these ponds close together? Is that one farmer that's impacted? Are they separated out so that you're not impacting? One farmer or two neighbors?
They're, they're only gonna be one or two farm.
Are you, are you talking ponds or what we were talking? We're talking. Part of the reason where the location Jim had talked about, maybe not at this meeting, but where the ponds would be, were planned to be built. Is close to be marshy type soil. Hydrid soils that probably even got tidal lines right now, so it could be farmed. So the challenge is gonna be the store of water there. It's not gonna hold much water. Uh, and it's gonna, it works, it'll be saturated so fast. There's really the, the capability for it to soak into the land. Very difficult, cause it's already. If we go upstream and try to catch it into some of the valleys, some of it might not really impact farm at all. Because you'll end up, like what the dams along Highway B are, is they dam it up into the valley into the woodland.
Right.
And then they let it flow on.
And the whole idea, right. And I'm not an attorney, but I built it up of erosion control stuff that it. The rule is, is that you can't change the water. I can't take my water and turn it over to you. It, the water needs to go where it goes and you can't increase the speed of the water, but you're allowed to pull it down. And so that's why, uh, you know, the county's at what ninety percent, uh. Site infiltration and they wanna go to a hundred percent. But these areas wouldn't necessarily stop all that water, but would control, you know, you would hit a certain amount. Water probably didn't going as it drowned, you know, twenty five percent or something. But you would see how fast. So for you, you know, if we could slow that water down. You know, five hours, whatever, that, that would be huge. Cause and how I know. The little pond behind is only four, uh, three and a half, four acre pond. So if we have a rain event area, the water. If it gets to be a big one, it'll fill up. And still it holds water, but when that pond is pumped full. There's triple forty eight inch pipe and it goes and then it goes right one feet. And so, yeah, it doesn't matter you, except because the lake. And so, you know, that's why I think the county, you know, right or wrong, their strategy is to try and be able to alleviate that water pressure. But, you know, we've been arguing to the representatives, you know, on, um, like. Lakes of Marsha and that, to lower that, well, you know, lower the level, keep it, you know. You know, they have the ability to set the level, but, you know, if they lower it too much and makes it inconvenient. Boats and docks and stuff. But again, that, uh, during the drag up meeting, there used to be a contractor that. Quarter mile away from my home. And his name was Dunk McGlue and back in the fifties and sixties, he used to dredge the lakes. And, and the channels and he dragged, dredged the channel and, and built, uh. You know, Highway M was built on. Soil that came up, you know, sand and stuff that came out of the lakes. Uh, John Nolan Drive that literally sucked the sand out of the lakes and, and built that corridor with that. And so, you know, they always say that we can't, 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 well, we do screw. And that's why we need to take a serious look at how this is all working, because every factor that we do, even if it doesn't. Cure it, it helps. There's no one, one bandage you can put on the belt, basically. It's gonna be, you know, unknown, I don't know from things. And if we find some and it works. Maybe you, you know, there might be some more.
You mentioned the maintenance on the pond. I'm recording when you talk about dams, is that more of maintenance on dams? Maintenance or how are they just more efficient? I know they don't take on land.
To be honest, I don't think dams. In my lifetime, they've never done any work out of it at all.
Right.
So if they were built in the sixties, the one by, by me along Highway K, they never. Haven't gone in, take trees out or nothing.
No.
And typically there wouldn't be a farmland where there's crop storing, you would access to a more readily.
No, but you.
Yeah, there, there's gonna be some in this area when you roll the area with someone else that give us some ideas. That there will be somewhere, there may drainage ditches that are much, they're, they're crop land now, but they can hold. There's not woods there. There, there's probably gonna be some. Some bait, example, there's some heavy events because you'll have some breathing.
Well, the benefit goes into crops and you can compensate the farmer for the crops that would have, you know.
So I have something for saying, you have to have a long term agreement whether.
You may have to have some funding city there to support. But I don't think, depends on what the engineer or somebody would come up with. I don't think you'd have it where you'd have to be necessarily. Other than compensating somebody so that a lot there, do it and, and feel good, but otherwise, I don't think it's like buying their land.
And I, I don't wanna bring up a topic that's probably better handled by a small, this longer committee, but from your knowledge of the maps that you've seen. East of where you are, the section that doesn't currently have dams, are there sort of these?
They're, they're just farther out. The more north, they're gonna be either just north of Highway K. Or they're gonna be, um, closer to be just north of Schneider Road.
Or just barely south of Schneider Road.
Yeah, or yes, there would be one just south of Schneider also.
I guess there's something about having a lot of elevation.
Then part of it is, is you don't get as, as much elevation, but you do get a lot firm on the prop land that feeds. Then part of it is, is you don't get as, as much elevation, but you do get a lot of firm other cropland that feeds.
Oh, okay. Oh, cause the tire.
No, you, you've got cropland that's higher ground. Like where I'm at, I'm at the highest point. Everything's gonna pull towards you guys.
Yeah.
And so on its way there, there's multiple areas where my land would feed into two different main waterways. One goes down past Schneider Road, along Airport Road across this, uh, or along Schneider Road across the, across the airport. Well, that can be held up just to the north of Schneider Road. You might be, if you would have to do the calculation, might hold back several hundred acres of land just at that woodland point. When you get to the north of Highway, uh, Cave, there you'll be catching whatever's to the high point, probably by Ronald's Road or maybe I take farther north of that, or and you should be able to catch it before it gets to Highway Cave. There could be some open valleys to try to catch some water coming through in those areas.
Okay.
So there are multiple points that something could be done. Um, might not be huge looking dams, but they're, they're, would have storage, well, capacity to be with a house like that.
That's a different conversation that I never have. Is moving away from these ponds, like you were saying, Emily, or I feel like you, you talked to me about that so much. I, yeah, I don't want to talk about it. I've heard enough about it that my head always goes. The idea that we're examining. Does it, it was definite change?
I, I think those ponds you would be sorely disappointed. Again, I am not a hydrologist. I, I've built erosion controls all over this town. For forty years I worked construction. So I used to work with the county when they were designing systems and stuff that we tried to come up with, you know, better, better ideas. But again, you build the one big pond and it fails, you're done. But by having other checks around, it just kinda takes that risk away. And to be honest, these firms once, you know, if you made an agreement, gave a, I'm just gonna just throw it wild enough just to don't pull. Now let's say you gave, you gave the farmer ten thousand dollars to build this on his property. You know, and then, you know, whether the city or the county or the state, you know, there'd be multiple areas, I'm guessing, where the funding would come from. Once it's built, it lasts thirty, forty years. But the problem with all these are, and like this, you know, they had the money to build them, but nobody maintained it or nobody inspected it. And that's why I'm saying you'd wanna do something. So then if you had an agreement with the farmer A here, and if for some reason we have to go back into repairing it or whatever, you know, let's say you give them a thousand dollars, you know, I'm just making it up, a thousand dollars a year to have that. It doesn't sound like much, but a thousand, right? So you have it also in there that if you need to go in to do repairs and you have, you know, try, then you'll compensate them for whatever loss of cropland it is for you to get in to do three. So I mean, it's just, you'd wanna come up with some maintenance agreement. And I would suggest that any agreement like that would have a sunset clause on it so that, you know, for both sides, that you could take a look at it twenty years down the road and say, well, maybe we wanna, you know, make it bigger or do something different. And if the farmers know this, I think they're willing to do it. And I'm just gonna be honest, I mean, with the animosity that was going on between our two municipalities, most of the farmers that I've talked, you know, and I, I run into them, especially at work, because I work on the farm with them, you know, there, there's not a lot of trust though. So those bridges need to be rebuilt.
The airport part is probably the biggest thing then.
Right.
Through the monkey wrench. So that's, that's what, you know, speed worked out here. And so the dialogue, I think it's good, so.
So we need to work.
I mean, you know, nobody gives you something for nothing. If they're giving you something, you've got to give them something and a term. Then twenty eighteen plus, Milton billions is lost, but thirty, thirty, thirty-six million dollars. And the city, I, I don't know, we have a value with, uh, I think like means six and eight million dollars from the, we are spending almost, uh, about three and four million dollars just on the Frederick Creek. So, 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 you know, they say if we have those dams there, so, you know, in the long run, we are saving a lot of money and all the hassle, not only just saving the money. It took us three years to get a lot of those approved from FEMA. So, so I, I think, uh, you know, giving something to the farmer that makes, makes sense. And also, you know, we are, well, I don't know whether you're friends, but you're working together now. This is our second meeting. And Brian and I and Art and we went on two of the tests where you'd look at the dams and, uh, other structure, we want to work together. We want to, you know, create a management situation. That's why we are here and that's why you are here. So, so I think so far things, uh, well, are there any big concerns which we haven't addressed or not talked about? Which do you want to bring up?
Not for today. I just wanted to bring up one thing. So, I mean, in the discussions that we had in the past and stuff, you know, this idea that you'd have a farm field and you build this, yeah, a berm and then, you know, it would only hold the water for, whatever, two, three days, N D, whatever. But what people don't understand for farming is once that soil is saturated, it, it, it takes the, the, the ability to use that crop. And that's why I've talked to a couple of farmers in the areas. They're just like, you know, you, you, you saturate that, you know, a couple of times, we won't be able to get in and farm it. We'll lose that land for, you know, two, three years. And then if a rain cycle's come back again, then, then they lose it again. So that's where their concerns are about that. That's why it was, we're just making a suggestion. It may work, may not, but if you don't look at it, you never know.
That's what we can definitely do. See, I'm happy.
I agree, I agree with you because I think if the management situation, so the farmer does something and city gets a lot. So, uh, or, you know, I mean, we don't have those lots. So I think it's, uh, it's.
And, and, and I can't, I wouldn't say if you have, if you don't come and flood it, hopefully minimize. Because if you can store some of the water, because, you know, if you ultimately get, you know, five inches or ten inches of rainwater, my guess is what comes from us is gonna take a couple of hours before it gets. And then when you thought you were able to handle it at one point.
You're slowing, you're slowing the water. That's what makes.
And I watched the water climb up on twenty eight and it went up inch hour. And I was reporting it to the county supervisor and state department, but every hour I said, we're, we're, we're gonna be flooded. And so, um, you know, and I, I had twenty-four inches coming in the way, if they match on twelve. And, you know, it's huge. It, it's, it's very wide lake that's, um, thoning the water. Um, and so that's when I asked them to open the water, send it down, send things to, to come and get, because we had those big trees banging around as well. They were like, I mean, thirty foot tall trees just banging around all over the rocks. And, um, it was, it was devastating. You know, we talk about water flow and we say it, and it was impactful for everything. So whether you're standing water in your basement, um, whether it damaged to your property or your. But watching it was devastating. And, you know, if we can work together to mitigate some of those issues, it, it is gonna impact everything, all of down the water supply. And, um, I'm glad that the, the county and even Madison and our partnership are working to get that water flow through there. Um, cause we all have it together and glad that you guys are spoken to these ideas, whether they're ponds or dams or a little of those. Um, and I'm glad that our leadership is asking for it here.
Yeah, they're all helping Milton Beach or, I mean, so, I, I mean, you're right. You know, seeing that water going out even a little bit, uh, everyone in Milton Beach or others would be happy to come and, uh, pour something in there and help.
Will help dig, yeah.
Bring it, I be on the field and start calling. I, I just wanted to bring up something that's not on the agenda, but just as far as information. My board hardly really knows anything about this either. So we had a, a meeting in Dane County of the six, I should say of the six towns in Dane County zone. And we had a variance request that we had to go through. So then after that, we had just discussion at this point. But I was on the, uh, county housing initiative for, I only went, made a couple of meetings. I just, I have too many things in my personal uh, professional life to be able to finish. So I, I, I resigned from that. But, but pointed out to me was, is that, you know, they're, they're looking at a housing shortage across the country, but especially here in the county. So I brought it up to our six towns in Dane County zoning. I said, I would like to see that we have hopefully for our farmers to be able to have people that work on the farm live on. Cause Art can tell you that, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the people that, you know, farmers are hiring nowadays are, are recent immigrants. And so they have no credit score. So they can't come to Milton and rent an apartment or buy a house or anything because they're just here, you know, they're, they're brand new. So I had suggested to the group that we were, should take a look at. We use what's called split. So, you know, if you have thirty-five acres, you can build a house. So, I just used round numbers. I said, you know, an average house, three thousand, older house with three thousands per feet, would we allow them to build two fifteen hundred square foot homes for their workers to live on, on the farm for one split? And then the course of the discussion, we're, we're actually looking at, we would allow them to have two homes, small homes on the, by C U P, additional use on the farm. But they'd be restricted to the agricultural people that work on the farm. We don't want somebody to start building houses and do Airbnb's or something like that. There would have to be, that's why under a conditional duty program, it would be considered an accessory building on a farm. And then, you know, the people that would live in them had to work on the farm. And the reason being is, is that, that we, they're at their place of employment. Cause what I see from the county's perspective is they think that you should have affordable homes in Milton, Madison or whatever, and then they drive to the farm for it to come back. But, you know, if you live in a, in a city, that's probably looks really good. For us that were born and raised all over the country, you know, especially farmers, you lived on the farm all week. You went to town once and maybe to get groceries from church on Sunday, whatever, but, you know, you live where you work. And that's what my goal is to do that again. So I just want you to know, in case you hear something about it, what, what it, what it is about. It's not that we're trying to build a whole bunch of houses in the county. But we would maybe do this program for like five years. And hopefully within five years, there'd be enough solutions that we want to have.
Jim, are you saying, you mentioned thirty-five acres and then having.
Well, that's what.
Do you have to put it off or can you have that as part of the farm, the farm and then one, so?
That, that's how they count this, what's they call split. So if I have a farm that has four forties, you know, it's, the county's language is a one split, one house per forties basically. So what you can do is you don't have to build one forties.
Oh, you have.
But see, what we would do is because of the, again, because we, we figured it's, it is a crisis and I was surprised because even Westmore, they're not, I don't know, they serve them a rural township. They said they have pressure in their town. Uh, you know, on the agricultural side of their town, which is east of Longview, for the same thing, that they're, they literally, they can't get workers and so.
And I don't want to spend too much time on this. It's on the agenda. You just mentioned it, but I feel like there was just something before the planning commission about a split.
But it was not.
It wasn't agricultural. So it's a different.
Yeah, which.
I just remember seeing somebody asking for a conditional use and I had to.
Oh, that's, that's, because you guys don't use, we, you know, we do.
Yeah.
That's why it just, it, it's a system they, they enacted back in seventy.
And that's part of the moves on, or no, you didn't just recently.
We've been gone about five years.
Right. You can't have.
All right, but, yeah.
Okay.
But we still have, we still have, our rule are actually, you know, basically it's about the same. But the only, the biggest difference for people in our town now that we're not in the county zoning is if they come to our planning commission and then they come to our town board, you're done. So if the planning commission says yes and the board says yes, it's done. And so most applications are handled with them. And so it's not like you send it to the county work. We, I, I, I had, we had some bad experiences. Right. Well, I just wanted to know if you hear of it, like what the, what they doing.
Well, that's great. So are you guys happy now or is there anything else?
If you have any brain, if you're out in the home. You're in the home or?
So, and then you're gonna work.
Well, well, yeah. Yeah.
They, they got a great relationship going.
We'll, uh, we'll put it in our next agenda, Scott, which is. First Tuesday and. Sure, I'll make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion for the town of Springfield to reserve. All favor, I, I, all, there's no.
I'll second it.
Everyone with you wonderful county, county city. So, and let's keep watching.